Move to 7.3, discuss and consider adopting Resolution Number 24-09 to disapprove the proposed budget from the Hood Central Appraisal District and request the refunding of monies paid for unapproved ventures such as may be identified in a forensic audit of the five prior or the prior five years of HCAD expenses. This is my agenda item, so I don't get to call on Mr. Kaufman to work through this. But I will say, and Mr. Law, you are welcome to sit there, you're welcome to come to the stand any way that you want here. Mr. Law, and I did meet Monday, and we've met before. We walked through the 2023 audit. There were some questions that I had about the audit, and there were some questions that Mr. Law had about the audit. So we're still working through that, but I would say in all in total, it's a pretty favorable initiative that's going on there. We did walk away with, you know, an understanding, an agreement on quite a few things, but we also walked away with a, you know, we'll agree to disagree on that. So I'd like to discuss that. Can I get that slide up, the bar chart? Are the, yeah, that one right there. I want to start, I want to start with this bar chart because this does detail what's happened over the past five years. But I also want to go through some information that I pulled together, and Mr. Law, I can now say to you that this, where you ask where, this is in the FAQ, Ask Facts, Frequently Asked Questions section of the Texas Tax Code. Some of the questions that we had earlier were about what is a primary government, and I'm going to spend a little time on that because it gets to where we are as a, the fiduciary standpoint from a city, from the city government, the county, the school board as taxing entities. Okay, the state of Texas, in the state of Texas, a primary government is typically defined as a government entity that has separately elected governing body and is legally separate and fiscally independent. And this includes state government, it also includes local governments, entities such as counties, cities, and towns that have their own elected officials and administrative structures. The Texas then asked, the next question is, the Texas Appraisal District considered to be a primary government, and the response is, a Texas appraisal district is generally not considered a primary government. Instead, it is classified as a component unit of the primary government. And then they give a bunch of different, what do they call them? Explanations as to what that is. But the fiscal dependence, appraisal districts are fiscally dependent on the taxing units they serve. As they do not have the authority to levy taxes on their own, instead, they are funded through contributions from these taxing entities. And I will go back to the bar chart here and say, look at the adopted number, the second line there. That adopted number is funding from all of the taxing entities. This is the money that is operating the appraisal district. This is your and my taxing or tax dollars. See, they go further to say that the appraisal districts are physically dependent, let's see, yeah, they're physically dependent, they are funded through contributions from taxing units. Legal status is that appraisal districts operate under the jurisdiction of the Texas Property Tax Code and created by state legislation, making them distinct from independent entities like cities or counties that have broader governing authority and fiscal independence. The component units that they described as the appraisal district, component units are legally separate entities for which the elected officials of the primary government are financially accountable. They can include organizations like appraisal districts, housing authorities, and certain types of special districts. And then they conclude with, therefore, while Texas appraisal districts play a crucial role in property tax administration, they are not considered primary governments due to their limited scope of authority, lack of official independence and governance structure. Instead, they function as component units within the broader framework of local entities. So the question that we have on the budget is not so much what's, you know, in the budget, but it's what's happened over the past five years. And you will see that top line is the adopted number, and then there's an audited final budget. When you go to the audit, there is a final budget. The budget can be amended by amendment during the course of the year, but the amendments are to be submitted to the taxing entities, and they can be approved, not approved, or, you know, ignored, but they have to be out there 30 days ahead of time for approval. The actual expense is also from the audited, the 20, all of the audits from 18 through 23. The approved expense is anything that would be under budget, if you will. And so those items that were over budget certainly were not approved. Now, during this 18, 18, and we'll get to the non-approved expense in just a few minutes, but I think you can go to the second chart now. During this 18-month period, or 18, or five-year period, over $2,800,000 were excess funds. And I want to talk about, a little bit about the FAQ on the funds and fund balance, they went into a fund balance. It says, "The Texas Property Tax Code does not explicitly provide a detailed set of regulations specifically governing fund balances or appraisal districts. However, the code does include several relevant provisions regarding the budgeting, financial management, and accountability of appraisal districts, which indirectly influence how fund balances are managed." And then they go into the key sections 6.106, 6.1, 6.6, 6.6662. But they talk about the management of surplus funds. While the code does not explicitly use the term fund balances, the management of surplus funds is addressed, Section 606-J. And it states, "If the appraisal district ends the fiscal year with a surplus, it must credit each taxing unit that participates in the district its proportionate share of the surplus. The credit is typically applied to reduce the contributions required from the taxing units in the following year." Now, I'm going to add, because this is where Mr. Law and I, well, I'm sure I have continued conversation, but it says that you will, you must credit each taxing unit, and it then says to the degree that it is not a committed or obligated fund, or it's not been committed or obligated, that wasn't included here. But they also comment, "The surplus funds at the end of the fiscal year must be returned to the contributing taxing units in proportion. This process helps ensure that the appraisal districts do not accumulate excessive fund balances and remain accountable to the taxing units." And that's the crux of, you know, what we're coming to right here, but it finishes out with, "The overarching legal framework in Texas recognizes the authority of the appraisal district board of directors to manage the district's operations, including proposing budgets. However, the taxing entities which fund the district and may disapprove the budget wield significant control which could arguably position them as holding the ultimate decision-making authority, at least in financial matters." And that brings us to the budget today that we have talked about. With the appraisal district, and by the way, all of these years, you came in late 2023, correct?
September 18th, 2023, yes.
Yes, late 23. So all of this has occurred before Mr. Law arrived. But there were excess funds, $2,807,000. And in late 2023, there was a refund, refund to the entities of $1,009,000. That leaves about almost $1 million. And that graph before this shows where that money went. And this graph that's in front of you here shows how it got to the position of where it could be utilized. And that's $2,845,000 that wound up being retained to apply to retirement, retained to apply to retirement, and retained fund balances for a building fund. The 2022 audit that was completed by one firm, this year, a new firm came in, and they had a significant restatement of the 2022 to the 2023 audits. The numbers don't change, but the numbers now show exactly where the $2,845,000 did go. $1,009,000 came back to the entities, which we know. About $700,000 over and above and unbudgeted and unapproved went into the, unapproved by the entities, approved by the board, but unapproved by the entities, went into the retirement fund to bring up the retirement fund from people from, or to bring them up to the level that they were supposed to be. They exchanged retirement funds, and they had to buy their way in. $400,000 is out there for a building, for the new appraisal district building that was, is fees for architecture, fees, surveys, et cetera, et cetera. Those fees, you know, have been, those have been expended. So there's $1 million there that's been expended with a board approval, but not presented to the entities for entities approval. And in these instances too, most of these instances, and Mr. Law, if I, if I misstate, I'm, you know, I'm happy to have those conversations with you again, but with the entities, they were not, again, they were not, they were unapproved. So if you could go back to the bar chart, can you back that up, please? The bar chart. Here we, oops, there. So what you'll notice on this is that the taxing, the appraisal district comes to us every year and says, we need about X amount of money. And we, as the entities, now, city, school, everybody, comes together and says, all right, they say, well, yes, yes, our, geez, no, we think that you might leave, need less. And you can see the adopted budget, which is the second light blue line, sometimes it's quite a bit less, sometimes it's a little bit less, but it's generally, it's a little bit less. They ask for X and they get X minus because, you know, the entities review it and say, okay, we need, you know, we don't see that, we don't believe that you need, we don't believe that our taxpayers think that this is something that should be paid for, so let's take the budget, budget down. And the appraisal district always has the option of coming back to the entities down the road if they start running short of cash or running short of needs or something drastic happens that they need more than money, they always have the chance to come back and ask the entities for more. Raise, raise the, we need to raise more money through our entities. Again, we write the check, the entities write the check to put this money out there. You can see last year, in 2024, they asked for 3.2, and it was 2.8 is what was actually adopted, about $500,000 less. But when you go down to the actual expense and look at what was approved over the last five years, it's about $2.5 million. And that is probably where we're going to, well, I can't say, Mr. Law would have to say where we're going to probably end up later this year. But with the $3,075,000, I look at that and say, hey, I'm not interested in continuing to, to place money into the appraisal district that may not be spent on the items that we were, we thought that they would be spent on. The, you know, I'm not interested in doing that. I'm saying we should reduce the budget by about a half a million dollars, and if November of next year, you need additional funds to run the appraisal district. Then you come back to the entities and ask for the funds versus the, moving it into a, an account, a committed fund that we wouldn't have any say over, the board does. And, you know, we trust the board to do a good job. But the entities have the fiscal responsibility of that budget and that money coming to you. You present your budget, which is, if you guys have not seen the budget that the HCAD did, they've done a very good job of laying out what they need. There may be some objections on the number of personnel, which drives some of that, you know, $500,000 increase that they're looking for this coming year. But the, we have, as the city council, the responsibility to our taxpayer and citizens to be fiduciary responsibility for purchasing the services that the appraisal district provides. And they give us a menu, we choose off the menu, and this is what we want. And at the end of the year, I'm expecting that, you know, we got what we wanted and that that budget would be just about even at the end of the year. It has not been over the past five years, and the funds that have not been, have been moved into the fund balance, with the exception of the 1.9, which we had to go and ask for again and again and again, have not been returned to the entities as per the, as per the tax code. So that's my recommendation, and I'm interested in hint, Mr. Wadley. And Mr. Law, are you comfortable with questions as well?
Absolutely, and obviously I was respecting your, your statements and didn't want to interrupt you, but I definitely have several things to speak to that you mentioned.
Do you mind if we have the questions and then see if you?
Whichever, whichever you prefer, sir.
Okay, great. Mr. Wadley.
My question, my first question, the one I have now, the adopted budget is what the entities agree on, is that correct?
No, sir.
The light blue line.
I think there, I think there is.
And the actual expense is what is actually spent. And every year, the actual expense is less than the budget, which is good. I mean, that means that there's, you know, you didn't spend everything that was allotted. How it, I don't, what is the audited final budget, the purple line? And in '22, how is that so much higher than, like, if the adopted budget, the light blue line, is what the entities say, this is what you can have, who says, who does the audited final budget?
Yes, that's a good question, and it's one I absolutely want to address. The one thing I want to start off by saying, though, is that the appraisal district, the Hood Central Appraisal District, and all other 253 appraisal districts in the state of Texas are by state law listed as a political subdivision of the state. We are our own independent body. We have a board of directors, just like the city has a city council, and it's actually the board of directors that determine the needs of the appraisal district through the process of proposing a budget, having a public, a budget, a public hearing for the public to attend, anyone can attend, but the public may attend, and then they adopt, they adopt a budget. Then that budget is required to be sent to the taxing entities. It's not sent to the taxing entities necessarily for their approval. In fact, the tax code only says that we send it to the taxing units, and if the taxing units choose, they can disapprove that budget. So we're not, we don't send the budget, it's not that we're, that we ever send our budget to the entities and say, is this okay with you guys? It's really, my, my board of directors has the governance of the appraisal district, and they determine a budget and a need, then they, they adopt it and they send it out, and then you all have the ability to disapprove, and that's what's on your agenda tonight, to disapprove that budget. Now, if a majority of the taxing entities disapprove the budget, then the law says the budget's disapproved, and the board of directors has to go back to the drawing board and they start over. But if a majority don't disapprove it, it's approved, it stands approved by that. Now, you ask another question with regards to the chart that's on your screen right now. When the board of directors has, has an approved budget, that's one that they've approved, and then we start operating in, yes, there are times in which we may have less expenses than what we budgeted for. There's a couple of areas that we always run up against that it's tough to estimate. One is, how much litigation are we going to have? How much litigation should we plan for, and how much should we budget for? The other is appraisal review board fees. How many ARB, how many ARB protests are we going to have? We don't know. So those are, those are areas in which we have to estimate, and a lot of times, we get it right, or a lot of times, we come, we come in short where we didn't have to expend as much money as we had. Another area that's a challenge is a lot of times having to do with personnel. 75% of our budget is personnel-related. We are a service industry, we're not making products, we're not, we're not building anything, we're there to serve the people. And so the largest part of my budget is personnel. And that is also an area where if someone decides to leave our employment, it may take a month, two months, three months, six months to rehire someone, so there's always savings that are earned there. Now, what, what that, looks kind of like a purple line from here. What that purple line, for example, in 2002, or I'm sorry, 2022, where's 2002? 2022 represents is, originally, the budget was 2.8, say, $2.88 million. I think it's actually written here. Yeah, $2,883. And it says, the final budget was $3,820. You would have to look at the 2022 audit that the auditors prepared. Now, you got to go back and get a little bit, bit of history here. At some point in time, in 2016, and I'd be more than happy to go into as much detail as you want with regards to the retirement decisions that were made in 2016, and then the decision approximately in 2021, that the appraisal district started looking into the possibility of building a building. Well, what, what the board of directors of the appraisal district did during those times is when we had excess proceeds, the law provides, as just as the mayor has said, that we have to refund excess proceeds unless they have been spent or if they've been obligated. Now, the mayor and I have had some wonderful conversations, he spoke correctly, there's some areas in which we've agreed to disagree on, respectfully, I will say, we've had, we got a good relationship. But I've been a chief appraiser for 25 years, and for the last 15 years, I was a chief appraiser at the Tarrant Appraisal District. I have sat under four different auditors, and I have sat under three different law firms that have advised me along the way. And they have all advised me from a standpoint that when an appraisal district, when the appraisal district board of directors comes up to the end of the year and they make some decisions, is there anything that we need to do? And they can obligate funds. I have an attorney general's opinion, if you would like, I would love to read parts of it, I won't, I won't if you don't want me to, but the attorney general actually weighed on, weighed in on this option as well. Now, back to the history. In 2016, the board of directors made a decision to enter into an agreement, that might be the way to say it, with the Texas counties and districts retirement system, to put the employees under the TC DRS retirement system, same system that the county has. But they also made a decision to do a prior service credit, which mainly meant that some of the employees, or all the employees that were there, that they would go back and they would get prior year service credit for that. Well, in doing so, TC DRS said, you're going to have to put in additional funds that weren't contributed back in those days. So the board of directors took some steps in which to take those excess proceeds and actually commit them to that retirement plan. Now, I did provide you all a handout, and if you would look at your tab, I think it's 2, 2A, Section 2A, the comment was made that some of these items were unapproved, and, and that's not entirely the case. What I have provided to you under Item 2A is literally the board of directors' meeting minutes for 2018, 19, 20, 21, and I think I went all the way to 2023. And for example, if you'll look at that, that first meeting minutes of May 18th, May 10th, 2018, it says, "A motion was made by Terry Johnson to retain 2017 fiscal year excess proceeds in the amount of $213,000 to pay the TC DRS retirement plan. Motion was seconded and it passed." So the board of directors put this item on an agenda, on a public agenda, held a public meeting, took a public vote, and, and what my lawyers would tell me was they obligated those funds. And when they obligated those funds, those funds no longer became excess proceeds. Okay? If you'll also flip over to the next page where it says the 2018 budget, in 2018, the appraisal district board of directors, and keep in mind, as the mayor's already pointed out, I wasn't here during this time, but this happened, this happened back in 2018. On the adopted 2018 budget, if you look under the account number 6050 and 6051, there's a line item entitled Retirement and a budgeted item of $96,200, but then right below that, there's a prior service credit line item on the budget as well, in the amount of $300,000. Now, that was approved by the board of directors. Once this budget was approved, it was submitted to all the taxing entities, and the taxing entities had a right under Section 6.10 to disapprove this item if they chose to. Actually, they would, they would approve, disapprove it in their different section, that 6.1 is a different type of disapproval. But at no, at no point in time was the 2018 budget disapproved by any of the entities. So there was a, at this time, there was a $300,000 line item that was put in the budget, approved by the board of directors, not disapproved by the taxing entities, which is subsequently an approval, and that money, the monies there went to the TC DRS program. If you'll also look down, and I'm just going to jump ahead because the next issue that came up is in 2020, I guess 2020 to 2021, the board of directors made a decision that they wanted to look into the possibilities of building a new building. And that process started happening. Now, the mayor and I agree on one thing, and that is, is that the appraisal district, over that period of time, did not go out and get the proper approval that they needed to build a building. Of course, the appraisal district didn't build any building, that process never happened, but we both agree that there's a specific process within the code of how that approval must come about, and we agree that that didn't happen. Okay? However, the board of directors made a decision back in those days to start taking some of this excess proceeds and committing it to a capital, capital outlay, building, landing, build, building and land fund. In essence, what they were basically trying to do, I believe, was set aside some excess proceeds rather than refund them and start saving some money towards a building. So in the event that we did go through the process, got the approval, we would have a down payment, a large portion of the property paid for, and it would be less monies that we would have to borrow. Now, I believe, I wasn't there, but I believe that was their intentions and goals. But what I also want to point to, if you'll flip over to like the 2019 minutes, you'll see another motion made in a public meeting, where the motion was made by Terry Johnson to retain 2018 fiscal year in funds, $173,000 to go to the retirement expense. And then that, if you flip on over a couple more, I mean, I won't read all of these to you, but there's, there's action items within the minutes of the board of directors' meetings to where these, these decisions were not being made outside of the public light, they were being made in the public light. If you'll flip over a few pages, you'll come across to like the, let me see which one, go like to the 2020 adopted budget. I don't have page numbers, I'm sorry, but it's still in that same section. I'll give you just a second to find that. But under our, our 2020 adopted budget, you're going to find in that same category, a line item for $155,390 for retirement expenses. That, that's again, going to pay towards that TC DRS retirement benefit for employees, but then you'll also see another line item for $200,000 of prior service credit, again, another approved budget item that's going towards the retirement system. But if you look down at the bottom, and I have it highlighted for you, we have a capital outlay of $18,000. We generally always have a small amount of capital outlay in the event that we need to do something for that year, but they also had a capital outlay for land and building of $200,000. These were put into the budget. Now, what I will say is this, as the year went by and as we had some excess proceeds or we had monies that were, went unspent, the board had the ability to choose whether or not, let me say it this way, they had the ability to choose to obligate those funds. If they didn't obligate them, then they remained excess proceeds, and as the mayor's saying, by state law, I'm required to send excess proceeds back to you. But they, but they took action, and I'm, I'm showing you, if you, if you look at, if you look at the next.
Jeff, can I stop you right there?
Yes.
So this retirement system, it started back in 2016, and you're telling us how it, how it's funded, how, how you had it in the budget.
Well, I didn't have it in the, but how the, how the board put it in the budget.
How the board put it in the budget. So. So tell me, why was there so much money going to that, to that retirement system?
Okay. When, when we, when we have TC DRS, TC DRS program is such that the employee contributes 7% of their paycheck, every payroll, and the appraisal district puts in 7% towards the payroll. But there's also a factor that TC DRS looks at because, for example, if I have in my account, so to speak, $50,000 that I've put in over time, mine's not that big, but let's just say, and the district has put in $50,000 over time. There's another fund of money that's into the TC DRS that's part of the appraisal district. And that money over here, it builds up. So in reality, 7% comes in from the employee. It's kind of like the city's retirement system. 7% comes in the employee, and about anywhere from 8% to 12% comes in from the appraisal district. 7% is to match the employees, but the other amount is to go towards providing funds for the unfunded liability. When the board of directors made the decision to do the prior year service credit for the employees, TC DRS came back and said, okay, there's years worth of service that has not been funded. The employees had not been putting in any of the money in there. So there was a gap that needed to be taken care of. And if you look, actually, it's in, it's in one of the slides here. I'd have to find it real quick. But there's a, there was one year, and I think it was 2018, that TC DRS said the required contribution rate would be 39.9%. Instead of 11 or 12, it's going to be 40%. And there were other years that the required rate had to be 50% because they were having to buy back some of the prior year service credit so that this, the fund for the Hood County, Hood Central Appraisal District with TC DRS would be of a certain size that it could fund retirements into the future. Right now, that fund for us is set, it has about $3.7 million in it, and we're about 90% funded today. If we put in another, I think it's $450,000, we could get to 100% funding in that particular account. So that's the reason that there was so much money being needed. And while we budgeted some monies, and we had some, we had some monies budgeted for the retirement part, but we also had some monies budgeted for the prior year service part, when the district would get to the end of the year, the board of directors would consider, is there any more money we can put towards the retirement obligation that we have? And then it transitioned, we want to build a building, and then they started putting some of the monies towards the land and building project and obligating those funds.
Sure.
I have a question on that retirement program. Did, did the district ever pay any portion of the employees' benefits that they normally would have paid if they'd been in the program? The 7% required match that they have to put in, did the district ever put that in on their behalf to catch them up, so to speak?
Not to my knowledge. And I know there's been some rumors that.
Well, I know, that's why I'm asking here.
Yeah, and I have, I had some employees that came to, when this issue kind of has come up, I've actually had some employees too that were saying, yeah, I heard that extra money was going into Bob's account, extra money. No, we actually put in a phone call today just to ensure that that answer, that question was answered, and we never did get a phone call back from them, but.
Did any of the employees invest in the catch-up provision that you're aware of?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not certain.
Because that seems to me like that would cause you to have a 39% increase in your funding to fund that backlog of people buying into the system to increase their retirement because you did that, or the board did that provision to allow them to buy in.
I'm not certain of that answer because obviously I wasn't there. And my assistant, who now does accounts payable and accounts receivable, she actually wasn't in that role or position either when the monies were being put in there. The individual has since retired.
It's all available through the, through the website, I'm sure, and I'll get with you and follow up.
Okay, yeah, and I'm trying to.
I'd like to kill that rumor.
Absolutely, and I would too, because I'd like to, like to kind of kill it for the remaining staff that's still there.
Okay. You know, I know, in this continuation of the conversation we had yesterday, but for example, that you just used, the 2020 capital outlay adopted was 200,000. And on, and then on the, in the minutes, on May 19th, 2021, a motion was made by Mark Jackson to retain 2020 fiscal year fund balance of 605,623 to be applied to the land and building fund. This motion was seconded by Terry Johnson. That's, you know, $405,000 that the board chose to spend for land and building, yet the entities said, yeah, it's okay if you have 200,000, but you spend another, but the board spent another 400,000.
Yes, sir, and that's one of those things that you and I are struggling to meet in the middle on. And that, and that is, is that at the end of the year, when there's excess proceeds, you know, and as I said before, yes, they had budgeted a certain amount of money for the land and building, but then they came up with excess proceeds, and then they made the decision to go ahead and obligate those monies towards that land and, land and building project. And I've seen, I've seen this done through appraisal districts for many, many, many years. And again, it's, as I said earlier, it's gone through four different auditing firms, and I've had three different attorneys advise me that, yep, that's the proper way to do it. And again, I have an attorney general's opinion that kind of weighs in on this to some extent, and it says that the board has the authority to do this, and the comptroller's office has given, has even spoken out and said that there is authority in which the board can't obligate funds. And once, and once the vote is taken, it says, well, I'll paraphrase to some extent, once the vote's taken, the funds are obligated and are no longer in the excess funds category. But if there is no vote, in fact, the person who was actually asking for the attorney general had said, well, what if we have an automatic provision that all excess funds go to land, to building improvement? And the attorney general came back and says, well, you don't tell us exactly how that automatic process works. But yet, in another section of that, that opinion, it says, if the vote for that happens, it's obligated. And what I interpreted, because I'm not a lawyer, but what I interpreted that to mean is when a vote's taken to obligate something, it changes from excess funds to obligated. But if you have some other kind of mechanism that doesn't require a vote, they don't become obligated and they remain excess funds.
Okay. And I've not read that, I know you provided it, and I've not read the Gatsby 14, but it's just been a day, I will get to it.
Yeah, and I will say too, that I agree with the mayor from a standpoint that nowhere in the property tax code does the tax code indicate us as a primary government. I think that is a term that our auditors, our current auditors use. They actually said that the Hood Central Appraisal District is a political subdivision of the state of Texas, and they are a primary government. When the mayor asked me about that, I said, you know, I'm not certain about that primary government phrase. I've never seen it before, and it's definitely not in the tax code. I searched for that, so.
Mr. Law, can y'all go back to the chart where it has all the, the excess funds?
Let me.
Right here. Thank you. So, Mr. Law, so let's start with 2018. Where are those funds now?
Those particular funds there, since they were retained and applied to the retirement, those funds were transferred to the TC DRS organization.
Okay. 2019, where are those funds?
Again, those are retirement funds that were transferred to TC DRS.
This 220, where are those funds?
2020, it says retain 200,000 for, basically for retirement, then 166,000 for contingencies and emergencies. The 200,000 is with TC DRS. The 166,860 was retained for contingencies and emergencies. And if you guys, when you look at your actual audits, you, a lot of times will see, and I don't know how your auditors call it, but you'll a lot of times see a fund balance. Sometimes it's undesignated fund balance, it's uncommitted fund balance. It can sometimes be a fund balance for reserves and contingencies. That money, the 166,000, was in our fund balance for a number of years.
Okay, so where's 2021's excess funds?
Those funds were retained, fund balance applied to the building fund. Again, that 605 would have been, would have wound up in our fund balance account, our undesignated or unreserved fund balance.
And where are they at now?
They now have been returned to all the taxing entities of Hood County.
Okay, and 2022's, where's that 937?
It's also been returned to the, let me rephrase that. The 937,805,000 of it were capital outlay, land and building, which has been returned to the taxing entities. But right now, in, in, I'm sorry, I may have that backwards. I'll talk about the committed funds in a minute if you'll remind me. But the majority of that money has been returned back to the taxing entities of Hood County.
And 2023?
Same thing, returned back to the taxing entities of Hood County. Now, when I say, remind me the committed.
Yes.
At the end of 2023, I asked the board to set up three committed funds. A litigation committed fund, a technology committed fund, and a building, repair, and maintenance committed fund. And we put, we put monies, we put 50,000 in the litigation fund, we put 20,000 in the building maintenance fund, I believe it is, and we put 40,000 in the technology fund for a total of $110,000. That money still remains with the district in those committed funds, which it's reported in our fund balance.
Was that $110,000 in the approved budget last year?
It's not, it's not a budget item. It's a, it's a committed fund that the auditors showed us how to set up. It's the, it's a fund that the board of directors has control over. Nobody can take the money, put money in, nobody can take money out. I actually came before this city council. You guys had actually tried to pass a resolution to disapprove it. But it, it's in our fund balance is where, and it's listed on our audit as being part of our committed funds and our fund balance. And when, when and if we get to the point where we want to spend the money on technology or litigation, I'll go to the board of directors and say, we need to pull some money out of this to go towards this particular cause. But it's, it's not a, it's not a specific expenditure item at this particular time. It's held as a committed fund.
And how many employees are there that participate in this retirement fund?
In Hood County, there's, there's 20 employees right now.
And wow. So there's 20 employees in the retirements, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
Well, I mean, again, they were playing catch-up to some extent to do this prior year service credit. I mean, each, each employee contributes 7% of their salary into this fund. I mean, are you asking me for Hood County or are you asking me for the entire state of Texas?
Well, no, I'm just, because the part that Hood County's paying is what we owe, right?
The part that.
And we're not paying for the state, we're just paying for.
No, yes, we're just paying for what, what is required to put back for the employees in their retirement system. It's just very, very similar to what the city has in its retirement system.
So why would you, why would you provide this type of benefit to an employee?
Well, I think all employees want to come and enjoy working at a place where they have nice benefits, they have, you know, have a livable salary, and someplace that, you know, with a nice retirement system, they might create some longevity, they might stick around for a while, they might not job, jump from job to job. It's just, it's a, it's a benefit that you offer to your employees to come and work for you.
Do, with your prior, prior experience, do most appraisal districts do this?
Yes. Almost all of them do.
And what's their percentage of, like, you said there's a certain percentage of liability. What does that, you said, what percentage was that?
Uh, I, I know some, we at Hood County are at 90% funded. When I was at the Tarrant Appraisal District, we, sometimes we were 96% funded, sometimes we were 94% funded, depends on how well the stock market did and the investments grew. I know some appraisal districts that are 100% funded, and I know some that are, that are in the high 80s percent. When I first went to TAD, we were at 80% funded. And while I was there, I was able to get us up to 94% funded.
Okay. So tell me, how much of a budget increase from last year's budget to this year's budget is this, is this budget?
Um, it's about seven, the adopted budget will be about 7.4% increase.
Just for the city portion?
No, 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 just for the city. The city last year, let me, let me look here. The city last year contributed in our, to our budget about 214, a little over 214,000 annually. This year, they will contribute, I think it's 228, 2.
So roughly $9,000 increase.
Yeah, let me double check my math. Yeah, 228. So it went from 214,000 to 200, it'll, it'll go from 214,000 in your annual contribution to 228.
But the, you know, the question that we have, and I understand the, you know, the, how the money got spent in the appraisal district, but that money being spent was never brought to the entities. It was approved by the board, just like the 605,000 by, by the board to do the building. It, the issue that I have is that we look at this budget and you say, we're going to spend this, and it doesn't, at the end of the year, actually, I don't know how you can do this at the end of the year, you have to wait until the, the, the books are closed to see you're actually into the next year, when you're saying that you want to commit the excess funds. But each year, I mean, you look at the history, each year, you have four, 500,000 in excess funds.
Well, I don't, I don't have a lot of experience right now with each year. I mean, yes, I'm not going to, prior budgets and prior boards, you know, may have had that. I don't think that we're going to have, I don't think we'll have that this year for 2024.
So, so mayor, my question is, what part of the budget, because we've, we've talked about historical knowledge, but most of that is not even related to what the issues are at hand with the budget that was presented to the council. So what, tell me what's in that budget that you were, you don't like, that you want it to be disapproved?
$500,000 of salaries, car expenses, you know, the benefits, et cetera, are, that's basically the increase in the budget, and that's extra people. And you have the same volume of parcels or less that are going to be done, and we're running 20%, actually, we run 30% more than ERATH, but ERATH doesn't collect, and I've determined that that's about a 13% increase. So, you know, we're running higher, we're running higher than surrounding counties, and we're adding people with reduced volume, or in the budget, it's proposed.
So, so Mr. Law, why would, why does the HCAD pay more than what ERATH would do? Why would, why is there a big difference?
Well, what, what I think the mayor's referring to is a lot of times we appraisal districts will say, take their budgets and divide it by the number of parcels, and they come up with a per parcel price. I, I sat down today and went through and looked at what the mayor had provided, our board of directors, on an analysis of per parcel prices of appraisal districts. And I'm very familiar with the, the website that you got the information from, the comptroller's website, the operational surveys. However, I had a lot of problems finding the same numbers that you did. I mean, one, one, for example, was Reagan County, which you had put on there as having 69,000 parcels. What, what my spreadsheet came up was that they had 97,000 parcels. And on top of that, I found that that particular appraisal district contracts out 100% of the appraisal process, and they only have two employees. And so there were several comparisons that were being made that I would like to have a little bit more time to go through and look at that. Now, with regards to people, we're only proposing, at this particular time, one extra employee at the appraisal district. When I was there in, from 1998 to 2008, I had two deputy chief appraisers that worked with me and assisted me in the process. When I left in 2008 to go to Tarrant County, Mr. Stewart took my place, and, and I don't know all the details, but I know that Mr. Stewart replaced himself as the deputy chief because he advanced to chief appraiser. And I know at some point in time, Mr. Eddie Rowe became the deputy chief appraiser at the appraisal district. And then when Mr. Stewart retired and Mr. Rowe was advanced to the chief appraiser position, it's my understanding that Mr. Rowe never replaced himself as the deputy chief. He probably should have. Um, he probably should have. He could have probably used the help and the assistance, uh, while he was, uh, in that, in the deputy, the chief appraiser's position. So for many, many, many years, the Hood County appraisal district has had a deputy chief position. And I want to return, uh, reopen that position, bring it back. And I believe, um, and again, I'm just going on hearsay because I wasn't there. But when the 2024 budget was adopted, it was my understanding, because some of the entities had disapproved the original proposed budget in 2024, one of the easy things to do was just cut the deputy chief position out, adjust some other function, uh, other pieces down, and was able to get the budget passed. I think, I think we do need the position of deputy chief. Uh, I have, I have one employee that's already announced their retirement. Uh, it is a long tenured, uh, staff member that's going to be retiring. Um, I'm going to probably utilize that particular open spot to, to fulfill that deputy position. But when you talked about accounts going down, actually, our accounts are, are, it, you have to look at the accounts more particularly. If you go to the very last page of, of my handout, I, I broke this out today so that you could see what our accounts are actually doing. Going all the way back to 19, uh, 2018. Uh, that, that number where it says total number of parcels, it starts at 70,199. And you can see that it does fluctuate. Went from 70,001 to 72.5, then it dropped to 70,100. And then it dropped to 69.9, then 72.2, then 71.7. And then again, it's dropped in 2024 to 68.857. And the question would be, why in the world are the accounts fluctuating that much? Is land disappearing? No, it's not. When I go in and I look at our mineral accounts, look at how our mineral accounts have fluctuated over the years. And then look at the real, uh, real and personal accounts less than minerals. We've gone 51.8, 52.6, 52.5. Now, there was a decrease there, and I looked into it, and we had 116 mobile homes that went away. That, that's why we had, we saw a decrease in accounts there. But then it went back to 52.8, 54.9, 55.2, and now we're up to 56.4. There has actually been a consistent rise in the number of accounts in Hood County since 2018. Uh, and it does, it, people are developing, right? Developers are building, they're, they're adding in new lots. Now, I understand there's a kind of a moratorium that's probably slowed that to some extent. But there is still new construction and new development going on. But there has been a fluctuation in the mineral accounts. Now, we don't, we don't, my staff doesn't appraise the mineral accounts. We hire that out to an inside, outside contractor that specializes in mineral appraisals, and they're the ones that appraise that. So the need for staff, the, the demand for the activity of the staff hasn't changed, it's actually grown. And so I want to add that deputy chief appraiser back into the, back into the budget. And I'd like to maintain that appraiser position for this particular type of work. So our accounts, the accounts that the appraisal district staff works is increasing, it's not decreasing.
Thank you for providing this. How do you pay, how do you pay the, uh, people that do the mineral accounts?
We, we actually go out for an RFP, and there's about four or five different, um.
I mean, by, do you pay by parcel, or do you pay gross, or?
No, they, they, we pay a gross amount. They come in and they bid, and they, they do mineral accounts, they do utility appraisals, all your telephone electricity. Uh, they also do pipeline, all the pipelines that run through the town. And then we have a few, um, industrial type properties. They do Wolf Hollow, they do the Bitcoin facility, and they do some large industrial properties. And we, we would do an RFP to say, this is what we want you to appraise. All these minerals, all these royalty accounts, the pipelines, utilities, and so and so. And then the appraisal companies come back with a proposal saying that we'll do this work for this price. And usually, we ask them to do a, a three to five year, uh, bid so that we don't have to go out and do the RFPs every year. We get a, get, kind of get a long-term, uh, agreement with them.
The audit, uh, shows that we have a $294,000, uh, excess funds this year. We're gonna get our money back, or can you just use it for the forensic audit, or?
Well, we, we possibly can use it for whatever we need to. Now, I, I will say, I mean, I, I know the audit says 294, and you and I both looked at that number. Uh, there's also a number of 426,000 of, of ex, of, of fund balance that we have, which 110,000 of it is in those committed funds that were set up, which would leave about $316,000. Now, this, this is another fundamental question that needs to be answered with the board and, and council. Um, auditors are telling us, attorneys are advising us that an appraisal district, because we are a special purpose local government set up by the state of Texas, that we ought to have a fund balance. Now, it's arguable what that fund balance could be. Um, the auditors have always told me two to three months, two to three months worth of fund balance. And if you take, well, what's that number? If you take two months up against our $3 million budget, it's about $550,000. So I have $316,000, which represents 1.2 months of fund balance. If I have, if I refund all that $316,000 back to the taxing entities and I, I hold on to that 110,000 of committed funds, we will have zero fund balance. And I don't necessarily believe that's a prudent thing for a governmental entity to do. Now, I will tell you, I, I'm, I would be happy with a, with a two-month fund balance. I'd be happy with a one-month fund balance if, if everybody would be agreeable to that. But then the question becomes, is that $316,000 excess funds that need to be refunded? Or is it, can it be attributed to leaving in the fund balance so that the appraisal district? Uh, and you know, Eddie and I were talking not long ago about the fact that what if a tornado came through and tore up our building? And all of a sudden, we found ourselves in a situation where we need to get out now, we need to relocate into temporary facilities or whatever. If I didn't have a fund balance, I couldn't sit around and wait for insurance to come in and pay, pay us money so we could make the move. I, I would need some kind of fund balance. If a bad tornado came in, I'd probably be, have to come back to the entities and say, we, we need even more money to, to move out, relocate. Then once the insurance comes through and everything, it would replenish the monies that we have. So that, that's kind of a horrific type of approach. But that would be an example of why an appraisal district, why a governmental entity would need a fund balance of some sort to, to have available funds in the case of a catastrophic issue or something like that.
You know, in which case, every entity that funds you also has a fund balance.
Absolutely. And they're.
So what do you say to that question, uh, related to the mayor? He's like, we are your fund balance.
Well, um, I appreciate that. But I know, I know for purposes, I know of taxing entities that have not paid their quarterly installment payments timely. And if you get into a situation in which some of the taxing units, uh, don't pay, I, I actually had one, and I won't call any names, but I had one in, in Tarrant County one time, a very large taxing entity. They didn't pay us for three months. And so we, thankfully, we had a fund balance, it wasn't an issue. But we had to literally go down to them and meet with their finance director and say, why haven't you made your quarterly payment? And, uh, actually, there's a provision in the law too that says that if they don't make their quarterly payment on time, there's a fine that, that gets associated, and the Board of Directors can actually waive that fine. Well, I'll also say that Hood County are people, the, the Hood County taxing entities, we've actually had one incident where one of our taxing entities here did not pay on time. And it, again, it didn't create a, a big problem because at that time, we had a little bit of a fund balance. But I, that's another reason why I believe that it's important for a governmental entity to have a fund balance. Because if your revenue gets shut off, if your revenue gets turned off, then you may have a problem making payroll, paying the bills, so on and so forth.
Mr. Mr. Law, how many of these taxing entities have came to you and said, you know, we have this issue with your, with your budget?
Uh, none. I, uh, I presented this budget to the Board of Directors on June the 13th, and we turned around and sent it out to all the taxing entities as required by law by June the 15th. It's been roughly a little over 60 days, and I have not had a single telephone call from any taxing entities. I haven't had a single call from any elected officials, uh, concerning our 2025 budget. I actually talked to a couple of our board members today and asked them, has anybody called you all and said, hey, I, I, I have a small problem with a budget? Can we talk about this or that? And they haven't received any telephone calls either. This is the first that, now, the mayor and I did meet yesterday, and we, we had a great meeting. Um, and, but really, we were talking more about the historical aspect of the committed funds and, and what the board had done in the past as opposed to the whole, uh, opposing of the, now, he has made his point clear to me, uh, in our meeting yesterday, that he thinks that our budget should be a little smaller. But I, I hope the, the council appreciates the fact of the budget that I presented this year. I mean, our budget went from two pages to almost 40 pages long. Because I tried my best to go through and break our budget apart by departments and actually lay out as many of the costs and the expenses that I thought we would incur in the 2025 year. I've listed all the employees, I've listed their salaries. Um, there is no fluff in this budget whatsoever. There are no extra employees that won't be hired, there's nothing like that. Uh, the one, the, the two area, or the three areas that I could say that, you know, have to be estimated fairly well is the area of litigation, the area of the ARB expenses that we will experience. And then I don't know who might quit. I don't know who, I do know of one person that will retire. Um, but I, I don't know what's going to happen from a personnel standpoint. So did I overbudget the amount of paper we're going to need or the number of envelopes that we're going to need? I, I tried to use historical information and talking to staff to figure out what, what would be the best, uh, number to put in there. But I've tried my best to make you all a, a comprehensive budget that telegraphs, and it, it tells you everything that's going on at the appraisal district.
So talk to me about litigations and protest. Um, how, how does, how do those fluctuate so much?
Uh, it all, the market really dictates, dictates most of it. When the last really, really strong real estate market that we have had has precipitated a great number of protests. Like last year, for example, in the year 20, gotta think about this, I think maybe it was 2022. Was it 2022 or 2020? I wasn't there when this happened, but we had a record number of 7,500 protests. The appraisal district had never had that before in its entire history. And that particular time caused for way more ARB hearings, which the appraisal review board that's appointed by Judge Buffkin actually comes and sits as a, uh, I won't say volunteer, because they get a, they get paid a per diem to be there, but they hear taxpayer protest. And they get paid $175 a day to come in and do that job. And I generally have three of them there every, every single time. You don't know how many people are going to file protest. And then if the appraisal review board rules, say, in favor of or sustains the value of the appraisal district, then the property owner has the right to either go to binding arbitration or go to, uh, take us to, to court in a lawsuit. We had, uh, over 50 lawsuits filed in 2022 and 2023. I still have 40 active lawsuits right now that, that are 2022 and 2023.
Mr. Rodriguez, I have some questions on this side when you finish up here.
Okay, I didn't see any red, red light there.
There's one. Mr. Surratt?
Jeff, I just wanted to clarify something that you said earlier, um, that kind of struck me a little odd. You, you said that when the board takes an action, uh, the, to spend some funds, that it's committed. In your opinion, it's committed at that moment?
Yes, sir, I was kind of reading from that general, that attorney general's, I, I wasn't reading from, I was paraphrasing from that attorney general's.
Okay.
Because it says when the, when the vote is taken, the funds are obligated.
The opinion.
Okay.
And I don't believe that's actually what it says. It actually says that it's still subject to the requirements of, of Chapter 6 of the tax code. You still need to do a budget amendment if you're going to move some funds, and the action still has to come before the entities, correct?
Well, again, I'll, I'll, I'll have to say, my attorney that I get advice from gives me different advice than what.
Well, your attorney general's opinion says that. It says that it's still subject to Chapter 6.
Well, and I, I agree with that, that if, if, uh, if the board, anytime the board makes a decision under 6.1 of the tax code, the taxing units can, uh, take action to disapprove of that particular item. I, I agree with you on that.
Right, 610, right.
Yeah, 610, mhm.
Okay, so then it's not actually committed just because the board takes action. It's committed subject to the taxing units reviewing and approving or disapproving it, correct?
Well, I, no, I think I would say it is obligated. And I'm gonna use the word obligated because that's what the law says. It is obligated, and then if the taxing units within the 30-day timeframe disapprove, and then it's got to be a majority, it would remain obligated if it didn't get disapproved.
If it doesn't get disapproved, right. But it still goes through the process.
It can, yes.
I just want to make sure that it's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that at all, because it, the taxing units would have to take that action.
The second part of that question then is, what is, what is, what does committed or obligated mean to, to the, the appraisal district?
I believe that at the, at the close of a year or at the time in which they know when funds are available, if the, if it's put on the agenda, okay, in, in, for public consumption, at a public meeting, and then the board says, I make a motion to commit these funds or obligate these funds for this particular purpose, and they, and a vote, a positive vote is taken, then I believe at that particular time, then those funds have been committed.
Well, that, that's, uh, that's not what the attorney general says, actually. Under, uh, 94067, it says that they either have to be, to be obligated or committed. They either have to be spent, or there has to be a contract to be spent in the next year.
Well, I, I, and I, when I started that, I prefaced that I'm not an attorney.
If, if the board took action and just said, we're going to put this into a fund for a building later, in your mind, is that committed?
In, in my mind, yes, it is. If they've taken the proper action with regards to placing it on the agenda, having a public meeting, and taking a public vote, then I, I believe, well, the way I read the attorney general's opinion, that yes, that would be obligated.
So it, it's then, and maybe not your opinion, maybe your opinion, the board's opinion, whoever's opinion over there, maybe your lawyer's opinion, that you're an independent governmental entity? You're subject to all of the local government code, just like all the other governmental entities except procurement?
Our procurement rules through the property tax code are essentially the same as the municipality.
So you can't commit anything then until the taxing units approve it?
I, I don't, I don't know that I agree with that. I have not been advised that way in the past by my attorneys.
Okay, so going back to some of the historical, just, just real quick here. Um, I, I, I understand some of the, um, some of the retained funds, uh, that weren't refunded back relating to the retirement, and you guys are going to continue to have conversations about that, that's, that's fine. Um, what about, and, and you provided some minutes for that, and, and, and I appreciate that. But we've had conversations about many of these issues and, and whether we could find minutes. Were you ever able to find any minutes related to the some $300,000 architectural contract that was spent on a contract that was valued at $30,000? Were there ever any budget amendments or, or actions taken by the board regarding that contract?
There are, there are minutes where the board authorized the, the, uh, payment of invoices. Now, let me.
Was the contract ever amended? Were there any minutes, is there any action by this board ever amending that contract that you've been able to locate?
That, not that I've been able to locate, no.
Were there ever any budget amendments authorized by the board presented to the entities for approval?
Not that I have been able to find.
Okay, what about, um, another, uh, issue that I had asked you about, where maybe trying to find minutes on some geotech engineering that was done on property not owned by the HCAD, not under contract by the HCAD, not part of a feasibility period, uh, that the HCAD have, but the HCAD spent money on geotech, are there any minutes related to any of that?
Minutes that would say what?
Minutes that would authorize someone to do geotech on someone else's property, engineering on someone else's property, uh, minutes of a, a budget amendment allocating funds for that specific purpose? Because I can't find them in any of the minutes.
I, I, I don't know, as I answered your question earlier, I don't know, I haven't been able to find any particular minutes that would indicate a budget amendment. Um, I do have, if you look in some of the, and I could take you back for the sake of time, I won't, was that, you, you believe that what I'm telling you is true. The board actually did authorize in two different years' budgets the expenditure of monies, $200,000 each year for the expenditure of building and land capital outlay. And the payments that were made to this architect and to these engineering funds, uh, were made, there, there was one made. Um, the first payments that were made did not, that, that particular year in the budget, it did not have any money budgeted, but they believe they took it out of the, the capital outlay fund balance. The subsequent year, there was about $83,000 that were paid to, uh, for architectural fees. I'm, I'm not sure what all that went to, I mean, I, I.
We don't have to go through all the technical issues of that. What, what I'll say is, is a couple of things that could serve me are, are that, the fact that you, you use the words, you believe that this happened, and I understand you weren't there, so we don't know. And the fact that it, it is not okay to expend money from a line item for some. And the fact that it is not okay to expend money from a line item for something else that it's not allocated for without going through the processes. I think we can agree that the legal processes were not complied with for the expenditure of those funds.
Well, but I, but I would say that in two years, the board did approve and put a line item of $200,000 for each one of those years. And then sent it to the entities, no disapproval of that. And then the board made expenditures out of that particular line item that was in the budget. So, there wasn't a budget amendment. There was an adopted budget that covered it.
But we don't know that that's where they spent that money or where it came from because there are no minutes saying. Here's a budget amendment. This is where the money is coming from. This is the line item we're moving it from over to this and we're, we're authorizing the expenditure for this specific contract.
There would not have been a need, in, in two of those years, there would have been no need to move it from here to there. There, there was money already in that line item. Now, there were two years, the last year, there was $200,000 budgeted, but they spent $229,000. Now, I, I don't see anything that covered the other 29,000 and there wasn't a. Anything in the, the minutes that reflected how you're going to deal with that, but there were times in which.
For time purposes, I'll, I'll just stop you right there and, and the last thing I'll say is the, right, exactly what you just said, the mere fact. That we cannot say where our money has gone is exactly why this budget should include a forensic audit.
Well, I don't think that's, that's true, but, okay.
Tell me where the money is. It's my tax dollars. Where is it?
Okay, it's my tax dollars too. It's everybody's tax dollars here.
You're not concerned to know where it is?
We are concerned, so.
And we can get a forensic audit?
Tell me how that is related to approving the HCAD budget. I mean, how is that, I, I don't need your, I'm, I'm asking the mayor. This is the mayor's agenda item, okay? So, I'm asking the mayor, what part of the budget? What part of the budget that you disagree with? That constitute disapproval?
I do not agree that you need extra staff. I don't agree that they need extra staff and I have, we have to figure out some way. That you get, we give you the same budget, then at the end of the year, it's another $300,000 that is excess funds. That goes to, you know, you know, to ice cream or whatever the heck it is you're going to buy. It doesn't matter. So, the only way that we, based on the conversations that Mr. Law and I've had, the only way that, with committed funds. The only way that we can prevent that from happening is to reduce the total amount of the budget. And then at the end of the year, if he needs more money, he should come back to the people that providing the money. As he said, we're buying a service. We're being billed for a service. A service that either we didn't get or we got overbilled. So, don't pay the amount that's being asked for. So that we can not be. Taken advantage of at the end of the year.
If I might add to that, Mayor. In this particular budget, there, there are no future. Items out there that the board is looking to fund. There's, there has been no more talk about a building. There is the, the, the issues of the retirement. Catching, doing that catch-up provision on the prior year, so that's all, that's all done. And we, and we refunded back to the entities 1.9 million dollars. Of all the excess funds that they had accumulated over time for this building project. There are no other pet projects out there that would exist. So, if, if we do get to a point at the end of the 24 or the 25 budget. Ever, all the excess funds come back.
Well, I, you know, it gives you, you, you just gave the perfect example. 1.9 million got refunded. But it was also held for three and a half, four years, which we could have been using that money during that period of time. 700,000, I think that, you know, that's over and above what got budgeted. About 1.4 to 1.6 million actually got put into the retirement fund. That the entities never had a clue what was going in there and the entities are providing the money for this service. I'm not pleased at all with the transparency that's happening with the money that's being spent. Just answer, you know, the question that was down here. The 400, $387,000 that got paid for architect appraisal, surveys of property that we also didn't own. Or the H, the HCAD did not own, all of that. Where did that go and why? We need a forensic audit. A forensic audit would answer every one of these questions at, in great detail.
Okay, Mayor.
We need to spend the money on the forensic audit.
That forensic audit was already an issue with resolution 2402. And, and it's been, it's been already addressed. So, you've already, you've already put the forensic audit on the city council and made a resolution.
Right, this tonight.
All right, now, now this is another resolution for, for the same request that you had previously.
Right, it still hasn't been delivered.
Okay, so, what, what is your? What is your ultimate goal to get out of this? That's what I don't understand. You know, the HCAD in 2018, none of the board members that are, that are here in 2024. Were in 2018. The, the chief appraiser at that time in 2018 is no longer the chief appraiser. The board president or chairman for 2018, 2019, and 2020 and 2021. Is already passed away. So, tell me.
What?
What, what is your plan for this?
I want the $1 million, the 700,000 that went into the retirement fund over and above anything that was budgeted. And the $400,000 that went to the architects that, you know, was for a bridge that was never going to be built. I want that returned to the Hood County taxpayers in proportional amounts and then I'll be happy.
How, how do you, what's the plan to get that money back from?
I'm asking you, you asked me what I wanted. I'm asking you for the plan.
Well, you can't get that money back.
I'm sorry, folks, you ain't getting that money back. You heard it here first.
Here's a plan, Mayor. You, if you want that money back, we can, we can do it. If, if this forensic audit, and I'm not a, we're not, the HCAD is not opposed. To having the forensic audit, all right? Well. The HCAD board had given you a resolution saying if you want it. All the entities that have approved for the forensic audit can pay for it.
A forensic audit that you choose the audit or you choose the scope of the audit and you choose the outcomes will be delivered at some point in the future. No, not on those terms. We will not take a forensic audit for that. We want a forensic audit. We'll set the terms. Because it's our money that we're looking for.
No, you're paying for a service. You want an audit? You want a forensic audit? You have to give it to the HCAD. To get the forensic audit. That's how it works.
Well, let's go ahead and, let's, yes, Mr. Coughlin.
I would like to put on my mediator hat. I've actually been trained as a mediator. What I see here is the budget is. Submitted to us in a, in an electronic format and said, hey, this is our budget. We adopted it. The council has so many days after that to meet and talk about this very item if they want and reject the budget. And, and, and so that's, we all agree, that's happened, right? That's what you've done, is you submitted us a budget that the board.
Yes, I, I actually, we'll probably be sending you the adopted budget, probably tomorrow. We've sent you a proposal.
No, we got, we got the actual budget that you adopted. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Meg's, Meg's on top of it.
Good-looking document. Okay, so, we've done that. We, we all agree that's the right process.
Correct.
What I'm hearing tonight is the other process. To amend that budget, you don't feel like you need to do the same type notice. You feel like the, and your attorney is obviously advising you this, all you got to do is post it on an agenda and it's up to everybody to follow you.
Let me, let me try to be a little clearer.
That's the way I see it from both sides. That, I'm just being the mediator here, addressing what I see as the problem. Is that irreconcil, irreconcilable difference of how this notice happened.
Right, well, one of the differences of, of opinion that the mayor and I have is that. When I amend the budget, I'm going to come back to the taxing entities and say, I need more money. You know, if you pass the budget, I, I need, I need $3 million. But then I come back six months later and say, hey, I need a half a million dollars more. So, I now, now I need my budget to be three and a half million dollars.
Increase.
Increase. That, that is an amendment, as I've been trained, as I've been, had sought legal advice over and things like that. If I come along and I say, you know what? We had some employees quit. We were able to have a person retire. We brought in a new one at a lower salary. And I want to move money from salaries to something else, office supplies. That would be what I would refer to as a line item transfer and not a budget amendment. We're not, we, we still have the same budget. We're still have the same requirement of money from.
I understand that.
The third part would be this committed fund thing.
Right, the surplus fund being committed to something and you don't feel like it needs to go through the same process as the actual budget.
Well, I'm just saying that, that's what I've been, that's what I've been advised.
Yeah, that's what you're, do you have an AG ruling on that?
No, I've just had legal opinions from attorneys saying that, that if, if you want a. Good example, again, I apologize for talking about Tarrant County, but I have 15 years of time up there. From time to time, the board would say, we want to pay down our unfunded liability. That wouldn't be in their, their line item budget, but they would come back at the end of the year and say, hey, we have a million dollars left over. So, let's put 750,000 of it and commit it and send it to TC DRS. It wasn't a line item in the budget. It was just, we had excess money and we want to use it to the benefit of the district. And when we go to the attorneys and say, how do we do this? This is how you do this. And we never did come back to the entities and say, we're amending the budget to use this excess money.
Again, I say a well-stated problem is a problem to have solved. So, in our collection agreement with HCAD and the other entities with you. In 5D, it says, in the event that payments received in any one year exceed the actual cost. Of providing services pursuant to this contract. Central appraisal district shall either reimburse the jurisdictions to the extent of the excess funds. Or apply credit to the future payments made to the jurisdictions. Reimbursements or credits shall be distributed to the jurisdictions in the same pro-rata share. As payments were made in the year in which the payments exceeded actual cost. So, how do you reconcile what you're doing with that paragraph in the collection agreement?
This right here is a collections agreement. My clothes everything. What, what, the vast majority of the services that I'm providing to you are appraisal services. Which are, were by statute, not collection agreements. I have, this is the original, if you don't see the original signatures. It's kind of interesting. But that, that line item says, in the event that payments received in any one year exceed the actual cost of providing services. Pursuant to this contract. The services pursuant to this contract are collection services. Me acting as your tax, well, the chief appraiser, I won't say me because there's been several. The chief appraiser acting as your tax assessor collector, your chief appraiser mailing the tax bills, taking in the payments, making disbursements to you. And yeah, it says, I, I ran this by my lawyer today.
That's why I'm asking. I want to hear how you reconcile this.
He kind of said two things. One, this has nothing to do with the appraisal aspect of the services that we're providing. This has to, everything to do with the collection services that we're providing. And then he said, that type of clause should have never been in a collections contract.
But it is.
It is, and, and I will tell you, and I've already talked with Mr. Rodriguez about this. My plan is to come back, this is, this was written in 1981.
Yes, sir. And also in 1981, also in 1981, we have a, a document where they actually sent us a notice and said, hey. We need to retain some of our surplus funds this year to buy four computers and blah, blah, blah. And it was approved by all the jurisdiction. It was a resolution that was sent to us.
No, I, I.
So, I, I see the. The way it used to be done in our records and the way you're doing it now, it's not the same. So, I don't know the answer to that. And I don't want to get involved in this civil war. I'm just trying to be a mediator here and, and point out the differences, so maybe y'all can reconcile them tonight.
Well, I absolutely don't want to have a civil war with the city council at all. I, I just want to, as the chief appraiser, I want to present a budget that I believe is necessary for us to. Do the activities that were required by state law to perform and provide the services to you all that you deserve. And I believe that's, I presented a good budget. I believe I've presented the most comprehensive budget this appraisal district has ever, ever done. The most detailed budget this appraisal district has ever done. And with issues about forensic audits and with issues about what happened in the past, with issues about. Past decisions that boards have made regarding retirement, about committed funds. All I can do is assure you that going forward, as I've said before, we're going to work our best to, to follow the law exactly the way it is. When and if we ever decide we need a new location, we need a new building, we need to lease something. I've, I've told the mayor multiple times, we will be going through the proper channels and the proper process to do that. Right now is not the time for that, but again. This, this budget that we're submitting and that you're considering disapproving. I, I'm, I hope it's not, has any, it doesn't have anything to do with decisions in the past by board members or, or chief appraisers in the past have done with regards to committed funds. We have given you back. Mr. Petrie, Richard Petrie, who was the interim, he gave you back really probably more money than what. If we had a, someone look at it, probably gave back more than what he needed to at that particular time.
And let me add something to that.
Yes.
We got it back because the councils and the entities rejected your budget and asked for it. It wasn't, it wasn't willingly given up. It was requested through the same process.
I'll have to trust you on that because I, I wasn't there that time.
Took the resolution from the past to make the resolution for today. It's the same process. It's, it's, we see the, we see the surplus. We want it back is what the mayor has expressed and that's.
But Chris, that was done by the, the HCAD board in good faith. I mean, they, they knew.
It was done in good faith because the law required you to do it.
They also did it because of the previous actions from the previous boards. And the board of directors at this time wanted to make sure that they were doing and following everything accordingly. It's, it's, it feels, I know that the HCAD board feels like they're getting penalized because we don't want to put a forensic audit into this budget. And it's being held hostage by the mayor, which if he, if he came to the HCAD. And came down and said, hey, let's figure this out. Let's figure out how we're going to do this forensic audit. And not hold the budget hostage. If he wants it included in the budget, we have several means and, and ways to put it in there. I mean, I could, the, the HCAD, the chief appraiser can say, hey. We can try to find money within the budget itself or use another. Litigations or some line item to pay for the forensic audit. Or we can come back to the taxing entities and amend the budget saying that we are adding the forensic study. Do we have your approval? He can approve it at that time and we can add it. But right now, what he's doing is he's holding this budget from passing because he's not getting the forensic audit. In the, in the budget that he wants. We don't even have the estimate from the, a rough estimate or an actual estimate. For this forensic audit to put in our budget, so.
But we've been, the council has been asking for it. The council has been asking for it and you have not sought to, to get it, Eddie, and you're part of this council.
I understand that and I've tried to, the, the, the mayor hasn't came to me. And talked to me about anything about a forensic audit or tried to negotiate on the terms of the forensic audit. He wants it his way and that's it. I don't know how many other council people, if I would look around. How many other council people has the mayor reached out and talked to you about the forensic audit?
He can't legally.
All right, he can talk to one other person.
Well, he, I don't know if he has or not, but he can't talk to all of y'all behind.
No, he can't.
This is the format for that discussion. And he's already had the resolution for you to do it and it was passed. And you as the council representative have not supported that action. You have been subversive to this board asking for that audit.
I haven't been subversive.
As a member of this organization and that organization, you have not done what this council voted to implement. And if I did that, you would fire me.
No, that is not true, Chris. I have tried to accommodate the mayor, but also you have to take.
The council, the whole council asked for that forensic audit.
The whole council asked for it, all right?
Yeah.
So, did the school board ask for that, all right? That, I'm sorry, the city of Tolar asked for it, all right?
And the county.
And the county asked for it. All the other entities did not respond to it. And the school district disapproved it.
There were actually two that disapproved it.
There was two entities that disapproved it. So, you have to balance that with all the other entities, just because. These entities want it, these entities want it, or don't want it. You have to balance that.
You are this entity, sir, elected by the citizens of the city to represent, and this board said, this is what we want.
Chris, hear me clear.
You're the chairman of that board.
Hear me clearly. We want the audit.
Let's have it then.
All right.
Let's do it.
There's been a resolution back to the city. And he hasn't even said anything about it.
Read it. It's got all kinds of caveats and conditions. It's appalling to everybody up here.
Okay, just like we go under the advisement, the city, as a city councilman, we go under the advisement of Jeremy Sorrell, who was our attorney here. You had the same situation at the HCAD under the advisement of the attorney. He provided this resolution for us.
I say pay for the audit. Find out where your money is.
I, I think, I think you should, Mayor, I mean, I'm, the HCAD board of directors want this. I I think, I think you should, mayor, I mean, I'm, the HCAD Board of Directors want this. I'm supportive of it.
We have a different agenda right now and a a resolution right now. And it also has a request for a forensic audit in it. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Wadley.
Is there a couple hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget to back pay the retirement plan? I, I, the budget's a lot more involved. Like you said, it's a lot more pages than it used to be. So I didn't see that specifically.
No, there's, there's no need to back pay it anymore. We've now kind of caught up to that part to where now all we have to do is pay in the required rate that TC DRS tells us to to pay.
It says 12% is what they're paying in to match the 7% to keep up with the.
Yeah, the way that works is the employees pay seven, the district pays seven, but then we have an extra five to help kind of get us to that funded, that 100% funded ratio.
Right.
Just like amortized over 20 years or something like that.
So a question I have for our attorney, Jeremy. All this back pay in the retirement plan, I was real uncomfortable reading about all that. Is is that all legit? Are you good with that? Everything's happened in the past?
No, not at all.
Okay.
And they had a conversation about getting together and discussing that at a later date.
The budget to me, I I don't, I mean, it all, it all looked like a real legit budget. The mayor had an issue with personnel. I don't know that I have an issue with that at all. You know, I I trust Mr. Kaufman to know what employees he needs for the city. I trust that you know what you need for to do your job.
Thank you.
The issues I have is that this back paying a retirement plan, I'm uncomfortable with just because I don't understand it. I understand a lot more now after this discussion than what I did coming in here tonight. So I really appreciate that. The other thing that really bothers me is is this, you know, a motion was made to to keep the fund balance of 600,000 dollars. I know it's been returned or most of that has been returned at this point, but the fact that that happened is, that blows me away that, you know, you, the law requires the money to be returned to the entities. And and in a meeting, yeah, it was posted, but in a meeting that I don't know how many people attended, you can just say, we're going to keep the money. And but the law says you can't. So.
Well, I can't.
And you kind of had an explanation for how you can. But again, you're wanting me, the budget itself, I don't really have a problem with. I do want to see the forensic audit in the budget. So there's more than just the mayor. I'm just saying. And and I know that the school board rejected it. They don't want to pay for it. However, if the but, if the audit benefits the entities, then they're going to benefit anyway. And and I think it's fair that everyone pay their their fair share. If you all have between 200 and 300,000 dollars every year of surplus funds and this audit's going to cost about 100,000 dollars, that's the number I was, I heard at the last meeting, then I don't know why it just can't be included in the budget.
Well, it could if we get to the point where we have that 200 to 300,000 dollars left over. I don't know at this particular time how much will be, how much will be surplus. I mean, the budget was cut quite a bit for 2024. But but I don't, and I can't, I just want you all to know, I cannot stand up here and speak for what happened with prior previous boards. All, all I was trying to show here was that there was an attempt, I think, made by the board of directors. I don't know who they got their legal advice from or anything like that. But I just wanted, there was some questions with regards that this was unapproved. Well, actually, there's, there were some line items in the budget that had been approved by the board of directors. And then it went through that process of disapproval with no disapproval. So in theory, it was approved. But then, yes, there was some times in which excess proceeds were were funneled to either a potential building project or to to fulfill and fund this prior year service for the retirement system.
I think, I think the forensic audit would would clear up the procurement discrepancy. There's procurement laws that that we, as a council, I'm hearing, don't feel like have been followed. Whenever you got a contract for 30,000 dollars and you actually spent over 300, where's the amendment to that contract to increase the scope of work?
Yeah.
Those kind of things would be identified.
And I can't answer those questions.
You're not responsible. You weren't there. Eddie wasn't there. But it needs to be answered. And those issues need, need to reassure everybody that it's not going to happen again.
Certainly. Absolutely. I don't ever want it to happen on my watch.
And so we're trying to build trust here with a forensic audit. To lay it all out for the public to see.
I remember Mr. Vale asked me specifically if I was amenable, I think was the word he used, to a forensic audit. And that was, I I wasn't necessarily prepared that day to say absolutely or yes or anything like that. I think I'm in a much different place today from a standpoint of saying, yeah, I'm, I am amenable to go through a forensic audit. And and but I think the question that Mr. Rodriguez was trying to address is that the school came out pretty forcefully and said, we're not paying for it.
Well, they're one entity out of the seven or eight.
Yeah, and then I had, I had Tolar, I'm sorry, Lipan ISD put it on their agenda and and they, their board decided just to take no action. And then I have to say, okay, well, all the other entities that didn't do anything, I don't know what their specific emphatic word was, other than the fact that they took no action. So I think the big question is.
Solicit their.
Absolutely not.
Oh, so how did you expect any action out of them if they didn't know we'd passed a resolution?
I assumed that the city sent that resolution to all the other taxing entities.
We did not. We did not.
No, I didn't, I didn't send anything to the taxing entities, nor did I call them and ask them what they were going to do. I didn't feel like that's, that's my place to do that.
How do you feel about taking the 294,000 dollars and appropriating whatever you need for the, the surplus from last year towards the, towards the forensic audit?
I would go to my board and ask my board that question.
And Eddie, how how would you feel about that as the chairman, sitting on your council tonight, hearing what they want?
I've already told you, Chris, I'm all for, for the.
Okay.
I don't like using.
I think we're making progress.
I think so too. I've already told you that we, that I think the board, now, I'm going to speak for myself because just like here in the city council, you can only speak for yourself and not for the entire council. So I'm going to speak as, as a HCAD board member that I'm amenable to having the, the audit done. Now, whether the terminology is considered a forensic audit or by our, our legal department at the HCAD as some other type of audit, that's, that's up to the legal terminology to be determined. But, you know, his, his job, just like Jeremy's job, is to protect the HCAD, just like Jeremy's job is to protect the council. So the HCAD representative, legal counsel, is going to do whatever it takes to protect its members. Now, I'd be more than willing to have that legal services come down and in, in front of the, of the board or whatever we have to do, I don't know what the means are to get with the mayor, since it's just his idol, to get this amended or put it in or somehow paid for. But the problem is, is that if you put it in the budget, when, if it, let's take for example, if you put it in the budget, 65% or 60, whatever the levy is for, the levy is for the school, that's how much they're going to have to pay. So they're going to have to pay 62% of this. And they've already said they don't want to pay for this study. So you take the biggest entity that's going to have to take the blunt of this audit that doesn't not want it, is going to have to pay, if it's 100,000 dollars, is going to have to pay 62,000 dollars. And that, and the cities is going to have to only pay 7,000 dollars of it. So that's not, so when you, as a board member of the HCAD, you have to try to be fair to all the entities because you represent not only the city council, not only the Granbury ISD, not only Tolar, you have, as, as a board member in that position, you have to take in consideration all the other entities.
Let's take into consideration the people that really paid that money. They're called taxpayers.
School, city, county.
Schools, city, county. All of that money came from the taxpayers. So one entity over the other, it all came from, everybody sitting up here, everybody sitting down here, it all came from the taxpayers. So just being a larger collector of taxpayer taxes doesn't give them a, you know, a bigger role than this. Mr. Wadley.
And if the audit was in the budget, just as an item where we all pay our fair share, including the school district, I'm curious whether they would actually disapprove your budget over that. They might have voted just to to exclude that one thing as an, as an item. But if it was in the budget, would they say, well, okay, well, let's just go ahead and take it, you know, we'll just do it?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, and that, that is correct that we could come back. I mean, the board has adopted a budget that doesn't have the forensic audit in there. But if we wanted to put it in, we could come back and do a budget amendment. And we could present that out there and then it falls under, I, I don't think that falls under 6.1. I think it falls under another section in 6.06. Because I think 6.01 is just disapproval of really anything. So they could, they could choose to disapprove that budget amendment. But I think the same majority issue would have to prevail. I mean, I just, one, I don't think one taxing entity can disapprove my budget or an amendment to the budget and it be successful. It's got to be a majority or, and then there are some cases where it's got to be 75% of the taxing entities that have to disapprove. But I think in this, it's just a majority.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sorrell probably has it memorized.
And that's my point, Bruce, is that let's pass this budget and then have, have the appraisal district do an amended budget so they can add the forensic study into it. And then that amended budget is a separate, separate decision. They already have the approved budget and then they have amended budget that they're going out. And that's, that's adding the forensic study and that would be a separate decision that all the entities would have to make.
Let me ask you a question real quick before you get in there, Bruce. So we're just one entity out of how many, 13 that vote on this?
Right now, 11. If the hospital district comes in, it'll be 12.
Right. So, so you've got one entity that asked long ago for a forensic audit to be included in the budget and it didn't happen. And now you're, we're standing here and we spent two hours arguing over the fact that it wasn't included in the budget. And you, you sent us a, a resolution that says, if you want it, pay for it. And the council's saying, we'd like to spend the money that you've already collected to pay for it. Can we do that?
We'll do whatever my board of directors tells me to do. I hate to sound like a cop out, but I serve at the pleasure of the board.
But at the same time, if they don't adopt your budget, it's no, and nobody else, six other entities don't jump on board with it, it's no big deal.
Correct. My budget would be adopted, yes.
I mean, if, if it's just us that reject your budget, you know, it's no big deal.
But, but like you said, I want to build trust. I, I don't want you to disapprove a budget that I, that I put out there, which I think is a good budget. And I, and I hope that, you know, I can prove to you that, you know, there's no fluff in there. It, that money's going to be spent. It's going to be spent appropriately. We're going to provide a good service for you. So, yeah, from, from my standpoint, no, I don't, I don't want you to disapprove my budget just simply because the forensic audit wasn't, wasn't put in there. Because I've, I think I've produced a good budget.
Mr. Vale.
Mayor. First of all, Jeff, thank you for standing there for almost two hours, having this conversation with council. I, I had to slip out myself.
I didn't realize it's been two hours.
Obviously, I mean, there's a couple of things here. One is, you know, whether or not, when you guys have a fund balance, when you vote on it, if it's committed or if it's obligated, whether the specificity is around that. I think we have a little conversation with the attorney general's opinion. And I think one of the things you said, you know, moving forward, I, I think it's real important, you know, and we spent a lot of time on the city budget, not to say you guys don't for HCAD or any of our other entities. But having the right, you know, bucket set up, certainly the retirement program really is very important to have funded. And you said you guys have been catching up to get that up to 90. I think the objective of, of all the entities, including the city council, is to make sure we have a tight budget as we move forward. We worked really hard on ours. I do think that, that, you know, we have, one of the things in the budget is headcount, you know, and we rely on the city staff to look at the, look at the staffing, what the needs are. We put together our strategic plan, kind of figure out what that's going to look like. And there is some latitude in there. We have to have the right people in the right jobs to do the right thing to run the organization. I don't have a major issue with the budget. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I don't know all the roles and responsibilities of a deputy chief and whether or not that's more important than another employee that you're, that you're going to have leave the organization. But that really, in my mind, that's for you to manage. And, and, you know, you have to be responsible for managing your organization. I do think that, you know, I, I did use the word amenable at the last time we got together and we talked about doing an audit. Forensic, whatever the terminology is, I think there are some things that we need to get under the hood on. And I think it's beneficial to you. I don't, I don't think any, I certainly don't expect you to, to be well versed in, in every single thing that went on in 2018 prior to you getting here. I, I think you've done a lot of research, what I can see tonight, to really understand things that have happened in the past. But I think one of the things that was said here a minute ago is about building trust. And I think that you weigh that, one of the ways that you build trust is certainly transparency. And I think that going through and conducting an audit is a way to make sure that all these issues that we've talked about tonight and at the prior meeting, that get resolved. So there isn't any further questions moving forward, well, what happened with this? And what happened with that? And that you have a tight budget moving forward. And that we go back and we do an audit, we appropriate the funds, as Mr. Rodriguez said. And we put the audit in place and we make sure that moving forward, you know, we understand everything that's going on as a taxing entity with the city. And I, I certainly recommend that we do that.
I appreciate your comments.
You know, I just want to say to this board, you know, Skip, Stephen, Bruce and Greg, as your representative on the HCAD, you know, since, since I've been there, we've taken small, minute steps to improve the appraisal district, the policies, the procedures, the budgeting process, you know, we've made those steps, you know, and, and made, you know, one of those steps was to refund all this excess money, you know. The other thing that the mayor had questioned was the HCAD, the home office. We rescinded all meetings about the home office. That way, there was no questions whether or not there was a home office. We, we coordinated that, you know, that was something that the mayor had brought up. And we were amenable to that. You know, we're taking steps and we're not saying that we won't, we don't want the forensic audit. We haven't sat down to negotiate or, or talk about the scope of work. He hasn't talked to the chief appraiser about a scope of work. He hasn't talked to me as a chairman as a scope of work. And what does that cost? I just don't think, those, those two things are two separate items. I would say, let's take out the forensic audit out of this decision. That's a different decision. We can put that as another agenda item, saying, you know, to, to have it, have it on another agenda to, to fund the forensic audit. After we figure out how much that forensic audit is. You know, we, we spent extensive time, just like the city has on their budget. It's called a budget. It's not called an actual, because we don't know what actually we're going to spend. We, we make, we make the best judgment on the budget to present it to the taxing entities. And, and that's a good representation that has been given to, to us as city council members in this package.
Let's just look at the last five years. That very tight, very good budget, $2,800,000 off. It's 20% off. I'm looking at 500,000. It's about 15 to 20% less. I think it's imprudent, not prudent of us with the history that we have here in front of us. And I, and I appreciate all that you've done, Mr. Law, because, yes, you have made significant improvements over there. But I think it's imprudent, not prudent for us to approve a budget with this history that we are at a high probability of going back in at the end of next year and saying, no, you need to give us the money, particularly when the disagreement that we have on how you handle excess funds is so, I mean, it's so striking. I'm saying, follow the law, return the money to the entities. It's their money. It's not yours. You're saying, no, you approved my budget. Even though I didn't need this, it's my money. HCAD, it's our money. And we need to just commit it to something. And the entities have no say on that. The taxpayers have no say on that because they have no elected officials in this area over here. So I, I, I can't, you know, I cannot do that to our taxpayer and citizens. Why would I? Why, no one should do that.
Can I respond just slightly quickly for, with, for you? The one thing that I would ask the council to be careful of is this. You, you are saying that there's a half million dollar delta. dollar delta between this budget and what maybe prior budgets should, should have been more like. In the past, the board had some, if you want to call them, projects that they were looking to, to fund, a, a potential building, and they, they had made the decision about retirement. That, that's gone.
But that's my issue.
Right, but that.
They made the decision.
Right, they made the decision back then, and then, and there, there was extra money that was needed. And I, again, I, I've tried to lay out, but I can't really speak to that. We don't, we don't have that going forward, and I, I would want the board to just be careful and mindful of the fact of the budget that I presented doesn't have any caveats built into it, that, oh, yeah, we're going to make sure we have enough money to fund, you know, the swimming pool that we want to put in the back of the, back of the building, that nobody knows anything about, that type of thing. I'm, I'm making a joke. But, but it's, but it's, we don't have that now. And I would also say, from like a mediation standpoint, I think there is a way in which we could probably work something out to where, if there, a, a project came up that we wanted to consider, that, yeah, absolutely, we come to the taxing entities and say, look, we're thinking about doing this, and we're thinking about using $100,000 worth of committed funds, or whatever the case may be, do you object? I, I don't have a problem with that. Now, again, if it's, you know, one lawyer thinks one way, and a different lawyer thinks the other way, well, we can, we can meet in the middle. We can, we can come to an agreement of saying, this is the way we're going to handle it. Other appraisal districts may do it differently, but, but there's no, there's no thing that says we can't do things in a way that we both are happy with, and I'm, I'm good with that. But I, right now, I don't have a project in mind in which there will be excess funds earmarked for something else. That doesn't exist right now.
You guys ready to wrap this?
I, I just have one quick question, and hopefully I can get this straight in my own head. It looks like there's always excess revenues. It's somewhere around $200, $300,000 every year. No reason to think that there isn't going to be that same thing this year, although you've done a, a very good job of trying to provide for us how you prepared this budget. And then the way it's supposed to work out is that, at the end of the year, it should be just zero across the, the totals. But it probably won't be. It'll probably, there'll probably be excess, just like there is now. We don't even know how much this forensic audit is going to cost. I mean, somebody threw out this figure, $100,000, I have no idea. I don't know that anybody's done an RFP to a, to a firm that does this and said, okay, how much is it going to cost us to do this for the last five years? But say it's 100,000. Say it's 150,000. Say it's 200,000. With all this excess revenue, though, it seems like we have every year, is there any reason, and are we under some kind of time constraints, that we can't just disapprove it tonight, you take it back, you guys put the, the forensic audit in it, for whatever amount you find out it needs to be, and then bring that back to us, and we just approve that? Or are we under some kind of time constraints that you have to have this done now?
There is a time constraint. But from the time that they approved the audit, not from when they presented, but from the time that the HCAD approves the audit, we have 30 days to come back. It's 30 days, right?
Yeah, the time constraint's really on you. You have 30 days in which to act upon, and we approved ours August the 15th, so.
Right. If we don't get six of the 11 entities to come back to you with a disapproval within 30 days, and that's, they have to have a meeting like this, they have to pass the resolution like this, and then they have to deliver it to your secretary within 30 days. So, we have a very tight timeframe, I'm afraid.
If you were asking if I had a timeframe, it's, it's really, the timeframe is on, on you all.
Well, so, if we, if we disapprove it tonight.
Right.
When, when, something, then something else has to come back to us at a later date?
Well, no, as the mayor said, if you disapprove it, you disapprove it. But if, if the other, if five other taxing entities don't disapprove it, it's still approved. It has to be a majority of the taxing units disapprove it for it to become disapproved.
Six, six out of 11.
But, but we have, but we've had the others that have said that they do want the forensic audit, so.
Yeah, you've had two others that have said you want, they want the forensic audit.
But we don't, we don't even know if some of the other ones even knew about it, or if they've been told that they had to take some kind of action on it. But my point is just, if we just disapprove it tonight, and then you, you go back, and then you put, put the forensic audit in the budget for this year for 200,000 or whatever it's going to be, and it looks like we're probably going to have excess funds anyway, because we always have had excess funds, and we just approve that budget, because that's, that's got into what we want, which is the forensic audit.
But I could, but I could still accomplish the same thing without the disapproval. I hear very emphatic, the, there's board members here, they, they hear emphatically what you're wanting from a forensic audit. You could approve the budget, and then I could go back at my next board meeting and say, I'm going to put something on the agenda to consider adding, amending the budget to add in the forensic audit. Or we could look at some of the excess monies that we, the, the fund balance that we currently have, and the board could say, you know what, we'll use that money. I've got $110,000 in committed funds. It's earmarked for technology, litigation, and building repairs, which, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to use some of that money for technology, and I'm, I need to use some of that money for building repairs. So, maybe some of the $50,000 that's in the litigation committed fund could be used towards this. With regards to an RFP, I go, I'm under the same procurement rules that you are, and if, if the cost is less than $50,000, I don't have to do an RFP. If it's more than $50,000, then I have to do competitive bidding and do an RFP. And we don't know yet what, what the cost is going to be.
Or the scope.
So, Eddie is.
Or the scope. I'm sorry. Don't know the cost, you don't know the cost or the scope. Go ahead.
So, Eddie, as the president then of the HCAD board, if we approve the budget tonight, and you, are you telling me that you can take it back to your board, and you'll recommend that they, that they do a forensic audit?
I will, I will take it to the board, or I'll tell the, the chief appraiser to put it on the agenda item for the board to consider adding that as an amended item to the budget. That's, that's option one. All right? Option two is to see what funds we have available to pay for this audit. All right? And if option one gives the ability for all the entities to weigh in on that decision, so it gives that opportunity for 11 entities, it, they will be notified, all 11 entities will be notified of what we're trying to do, which means, it goes back to the point that they've been trying to make, is have they been all notified? No, they, I, we don't know if they all been notified about a forensic audit. But if we amend the budget, then they will all be notified what we're trying to do is adding a forensic line item in there. Or option two is to see what type of revenue we have within our current budget, and I will have to talk with the, the chief appraiser on what, how we can do that. And then all the entities are paying for it at that time. Those are, are two options. But if you don't, if you don't approve the budget, the appraisal district's budget tonight, we don't have those two, two options. Then we just have to wait out and see what all the other entities are going to do.
And if.
You'll know in 30 days.
Yeah, and you'll know in 30 days.
Actually, less.
And, and the, the, the options I'm trying to do is, is trying to appease the city's position in trying to get the, the forensic audit. But if, if this adopted budget passes, you know, then the audit is not in the budget. All right? The audit's not in the budget. Then the, the board can decide whether they want to do it or not.
Right.
But in this case, I am giving you, I'm, I would recommend to the board the two options, to have it in the forensic audit as an amended budget item, or two, see what type of funds we can accumulate, or where we can pull the funds out of to get the audit done. But we, like, there's so much work that goes into trying to get this audit done. You know, it's going to take some time. You have to get the scope of work correctly. You have to have legal advice input into it, and then you have to go out for RFPs based on the scope of work, and then get those bids back. It's not, it's not a, a, a fast process by any means.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So, we had a budget. Tonight, we're, our last agenda item is to, to make amendments to our budget. I don't understand why your process wouldn't be the same. I, I don't like the, the idea of saying, I'm going to adopt a budget tonight, and then maybe an audit or something's going to happen down the road. I know you're, what you're saying, you're going to go to your board, and you're going to let your board decide. They could decide, no, we don't want to do it, but we got their approval, so we're good. And I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. All right. We have the proposed resolution, City of Granbury, to disapprove the Hood Central Appraisal District Board, Board Approved and Proposed 2025 Budget, and to request the refund of all excess surplus and reserve funds collected with any interest earned by the Hood Central Appraisal District from the taxing entities to be distributed back to the original taxing jurisdictions that paid them, based on the same percentages as when they were paid, and to include in the revised budget a line item to pay for a forensic audit from fiscal year 2017 through fiscal year 2024. That is the resolution that we would look to approve. Do I hear a, or did, we would approve that motion, which disapproves the appraisal central district's budget. Do I hear a motion to?
Mayor, I make a motion to disapprove Resolution 2409.
You make a motion to disapprove Resolution 2409. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor of disapproving Resolution Number 2409, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. I hear five and one, nay. Is that right? Five and one, five and two. Okay. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion to approve Resolution Number 2409?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear six ayes.
Mayor, Carla, did, can you repeat what the motion was?
The current question?
Yeah, the mayor's.
Is to approve the, the item that's written.
Okay.
To have approval, or yea or nay? We have, you had no vote.
No vote.
I don't think you can do that. I think our rules.
Our rules require a yea or a nay.
Yeah.
Then I disapprove.
Okay, nay. So, we have, the resolution passes, five and one. Mr. Rodriguez, disapproved. So, Mr. Law left.
No, there you are. I, thank you, you know, yeah, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Thank you. And I'm sure we're going to have more and more conversations, and I just want all of the folks out here to understand that the conversations are positive and fruitful. We just have a disagreement on some items that are probably going to be resolved by others, not, certainly not me, or as an attorney or an accountant. So.
Well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to speak and try to answer any questions you guys have. And again, my, my ultimate goal is to, is to move forward with, with trust from the city council, trust from all the tax entities in Hood County, and just to do our job as required by law. And we, we're, you know, that's why they say lawyers are practicing, right? They practice every day and learn something new, and that, and we're no different. We learn something new all the time. So, thank, thank you for hearing me out.
Safe travels home.
Thank you.